Okay, I'm gonna call the ordinance subcommittee meeting for July thirteenth, Wednesday, six o'clock. To order. It looks like it's just us for now and our distinguished guests. Welcome. So um since there's nobody here, I'm gonna dispense with the formalities, uh food trucks. So Tamara, I wanna catch you up a little bit.
Okay.
So there was some back and forth between um our health inspector Barbara and myself around what are we gonna do? Or about because we had this onslaught of food trucks. And and kind of the way it played out was that um Jackie Duda was has been and is going to continue to be the one responsible for inspecting and issuing um you know, I guess, a permit for food trucks. So and I and I'm fine with that to continue that way because it seems like it works pretty well. Correct? Okay, that's good. Um however, there is uh I feel like there is probably a place for our ordinance to maybe catch up with what's going on because there's a couple of things that aren't necessarily in Jackie's purview. Um and so I just wanted to make sure that we're we take a good hard look at this and explore it from as many angles as we can. And that's why I wanted to have this meeting was just to kinda catch I wanted I was hoping JP would be here just to catch you guys up so we can start brainstorming because this is gonna take some actual this is we're gonna have to be kinda creative here. Um we're gonna have to, you know, use our our out of the box thinking, I think.
Okay, where are the issues?
So the main issue really is within the ordinance, which is set up as a mobile vendor ordinance, it doesn't really necessarily address food trucks. It's more of like, you know, if you have a cart with
Hot dogs.
hot dogs or or if you have a hot you have a cart with balloons or with glow in the dark swords or something, you know, it's like someone pushing a cart. Um so we kinda need to catch up the ordinance system a little bit, just to separate so there's a little clarification. Um and so that means that we're gonna have probably have to say, what does it make sense for like a fee schedule for a food truck? I mean, I I think Barbara would probably agree, which is that they should only have to get a license through the city like once a year. Just right?
Yeah, that's what they do in Amherst. It's a hundred dollar
That's that's what I figured.
For there are complications though, and I don't I mean, I don't wanna derail you on
No, no, jump in. I'm I'm I know exactly where I am, so it's gonna be hard to derail me. It's good.
But um Okay, so where I where um I see there being potential conflicts or confusion is specifically behind the mills where we're just completing the infrastructure project. Because the property line between the city and the private property owners runs straight down the middle of the parking lot. And it's technically considered a public parking lot. However, the way that the easement agreements were drafted for that project is that the um property owners have the right to set reasonable rules and regulations for the entire parking lot, both on their side and the city's side.
On the city's side.
I don't think there's consistency right now on the mill owners themselves on what they're charging food vendors to be. I know that one mill owner is charging a food vendor to be there a hundred dollars a day.
Yes, that's well, he wants to. I don't think he's actually gotten that yet.
Um I don't know where some of the other mill owners. I know that uh where abandoned building brewery is, they had multiple food trucks um for an event not too long ago. I don't know what was charged there. But there has the potential to be confusion. Like my concern is um you know, a food vendor maybe doesn't wanna pay a hundred dollars a day to be behind one of the mills and so goes to the city's side and then we're kinda stuck in the middle of trying to figure out what happens there.
Right, and that and that that didn't derail me. That was actually a perfect segue because the next really the next issue that we have to tackle is that, which is where do they park?
I question.
Because you know, so I actually and I ended up having a meeting with Mike Nishan. Um and he was concerned that, you know, any food truck could pull in at any time um and have generators and take up three parking spaces. And while we do have, what is it, four hundred new parking
A plethora of spaces.
We have a lot of spaces. However, you know, it's kind of ironic with this plethora of spaces that we have now. There's actually some positioning and scrambling to kind of identify those spaces as these are our space. You know, it's like
Yeah, it's getting very complicated.
Yes, it's getting complicated. And so the and the easement has not necess has not been approved by the city.
Yes, it has.
It has, but didn't it didn't
Oh, yes. The city went through it went through it was reviewed. So initially, it was this was done before at the beginning of the project, like three years ago.
At the beginning of the project.
So it was approved by the city attorney. It was um negotiated on by behalf of the um former mayor. It was reviewed by all city council members and voted at a city council meeting. So it it went through the proper process. So there's now
Yeah. Right. So I guess I'm confused because there there was some revisioning happening. I know that Will Bundy's lawyers wanted to change things.
Yes, and that has and and I have not got consensus yet from all of the mill owners that they are on board with the changes that Will Bundy's
Now, is that gonna have to come back to us once? Okay, so it is gonna come back. So
Yes, it is. Yes. And it has a lot to do with the mass works program themselves. There was some complicated issues that arose when the base course of paving went down and there were certain businesses' names that were put down on the parking lots.
I saw that.
And the mass works program was not happy.
No.
I was not happy. You know, this is public taxpayer dollars being paid for. It's a public infrastructure project.
Right.
We cannot be creating a privatization of spaces up there, even though we have set these reasonable rules and regulations.
Right.
So that's where we've been trying to and this will come before council at some point in your near future is trying to sort of clarify what those reasonable rules and regulations are. But this is gonna be an ongoing discussion
Sure.
from now on. And if properties are sold and it's in building owners like we, you know, it's
It's gonna be interesting.
It's gonna be interesting.
So we have to we have to have this kind of um at least, I think from from our side, it makes sense to say what do we want to have as you know, as guidelines for food trucks that are coming to the city? We don't wanna necessarily be restrictive, but we also have to be realistic in the fact that, you know, because they're portable and they can kind of park. Like what if they decide just to take up parking spaces in front of a business on you or do we wanna allow that? Like how what process do we wanna have in place? And is that process part of the um per initial permitting process? Is it part of some sort of ongoing um like uh seven day notice? I was thinking about that Barbara. You're like, if they get a year long permit, how like and they're gonna decide to
Bop around.
So I was like, well, you know, maybe if we put a reasonable thing in, like you you have to give seven day notice if you're going to to the police department, to the property owner, whatever. And I don't know if that's a solution. But it's gonna we're gonna have to think of something that's
Well, that that leads me to number eight. Who would be the food truck police?
Okay. True.
You know, somebody if you set all these
Guidelines. They have to be enforceable.
Somebody's gonna have
And it and another and it came up today. In fact, I was at a regional economic development meeting with the um with the uh chambers representatives in Amherst in North Hampton, East Hampton and South Hadley. And so Amherst was talking a lot about this. And something that's come up for them is say, there is a festival that's gonna be held on a very specific location. Like for them, it's around the town corner.
Sure, sure.
Um when they give them the permit to rent out those specific community areas, it also includes the parking spaces that surround that area. So now you have food trucks that are used to coming to those locations at a very on specific days and maybe this might be one of the days when the festival's being held. So who trumps what?
Right.
And I think that's another, it's nothing that I had thought of before, but they're having they've had a number of situations where you've got festivals in place of which permit trumps what? Is it a festival permit because it's a five hundred dollar fee for one day?
Right, interesting. Right.
Which seems to trump maybe the hundred dollar permit that's the annual fee.
For a year. Right.
And they could go to a certain another location because they're, you know, they've got six locations they go to, but they wanna be on this location on this day. So just to add another layer of complexity on
Yeah, well, so the good news is that we have this in our committee already. We've already kind of started like thinking about this. But you know, now now that we're getting a little bit more specific and we're seeing the kind of specific issues that we have at the mills um and how that could also play out, you know, for cultural chaos or art block or
They banned they banned food trucks for chaos. So that was a big part of the
Okay, so Well, but Brass Cat had it.
Brass Cat had it because they had it on their private property.
Right.
But the co- but the cultural district committee wanted to hold food trucks because the response that they had gotten back from last year's chaos is that there wasn't enough food vendors, you know, other food vendors.
Right.
And so the brick and mortars on Cotty Street absolutely said, no food trucks.
Sure.
So the committee went and had an application process from other food vendors like Small Oven and the Indian Restaurant who set up tents.
Yeah. Right.
But they wouldn't allow food trucks.
Food trucks.
But they could they were allowing other East Hampton restaurants outside the district to set up a location here. But from the health perspective, it was way more complicated. Like it would have been easier for an inspection for Jackie to just have a food truck
Food truck that she's already maybe inspected or
Because it's all contained and it's all right there. But um I mean, it worked out fine, but but there was huge pushback from the broken
Right.
brick and mortars on Cotty Street for chaos to not have food trucks at all. It was a big issue.
Right. And so that might I mean, that might be something that as this kind of unfolds that we wanna think about like unless um because really, do we want a food truck maybe parked in front of Amy's place?
Does I have any particular distance from restaurants?
Right, like we should we should probably we should probably have some sort of consideration to be like, we need to make sure that we're protecting I mean, and I guess we have to be careful about that, right? Isn't there some federal thing like we can't protectionism? But I mean, we should be aware of at least our local restaurants and not allow food trucks to necessarily park in front of them or in close proximity. So that might be another. So that's a good one.
You might wanna you might have to be like worried about competition.
Right.
You know, like not using that word.
Right.
But like, well, I always think of it like, well, you know, Melissa's brother has a food truck and we visited Boston and and all this.
I know, once he come in.
This is
But what what they do there, and I know it's not the East Hampton's not the same thing as Boston, but they have a lottery where they have areas where you can go so that because I know what you're worried about is um like the the board of health, somebody wants a food truck, they have to be permitted in each city or town. So they come into the parking lot and Jackie, you know, checks goes through with it and gives them the permit to be in East Hampton. Well, what if we had six of them on Cotty Street in a row? Like taking up all the parking that we want our pedestrians to be or in our in our public parking lot like
Yeah.
So but they have like in different areas like larger cities, they have a lottery where you get this area, you get that area, and then I don't even want to bring this up, but
And
you probably already did. Behind the mills where we
Yeah, we talked about it. How complicated is this already?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And if somebody like
So like what if each place behind there, they wanna charge different amounts for parking and then so what if the Yeah.
So we brought it up, like what if the truck doesn't wanna pay a hundred dollars a day to be behind one mill building and then goes across the property line and then parks on the city's side, but they've got there's that easement agreement that
Right, because the owners because the owners are charging for them, but we are not.
Right.
We are not. All they get from the city is a board of health permit. So we're not charging for like so
Right.
you have a food truck and you wanna be right there on Cotty Street in front of the boardwalk, we're not getting a dime for that. So
Right.
So what I know about my brother's business is that he has a permit for the city of Boston for several days a week. And he got in a lottery and it's based on how long you've been in the program, blah blah blah. And if you get Tuesday afternoons in a kind of bummer location, if you wanna stay in the lottery, you show up every Tuesday and you sit in that spot and you serve that community. Whether you like it or not, otherwise you lose your opportunity to be part of the thing. And they are lucky in the sense that they have a lot of competition in Boston, that people want those spots. And then he has private agreements to park on private
Private property, which you were just talking about.
Property. Right.
And if he parks on private property, then that's an arrangement between him and and the
Very different.
All bets are off.
Which is what you were just talking about.
The property owner. And he has an arrangement that, you know, like uh you know, on Thursday nights, blah blah blah, I'm at this location and this is
Right. Mm-hmm.
such and such business office or this is brewery is very common for him.
Right, right, right. Sure.
So that's private property. He has an arrangement to park his vehicle on a private property at a certain location. That's a business uh arrangement with the business owner. And this municipal public parking is is controlled. You can't park a business in public parking without a permit.
Right.
But where it gets complicated with the mills just is that
Okay, so public parking, a permit from who? So say our parking lot, a permit from the city.
Permit from the city.
From the city.
At a charge.
At a
At a charge, probably.
And and a lottery.
And and the thing with the lottery is not to plug. Your brother won number one. Not the only person that's not winning number one in this crowd um as the best food truck. It didn't matter. He's still in the lottery. So where you get to go, which means like eight food trucks aren't in the same row on that street.
So here here's one of the things that was kicking around and let me bounce it off you guys and see what you think because I was I was almost after I came out of my meeting with Mike, I was you were there Karen, and I I was like, oh my God, what are we gonna do? Like, how are we gonna manage this? Because this whole and now would we be able to and maybe we could I maybe we could do this in other public parking areas, but identify catch zones. Like, could we say that in the mill parking lot, there's a certain area that would be ideal, you know, so like
That's where that's where the permit is for. Like if you say that's the catch zone or that's the permit, that's where you park. You don't park in front of the business.
Right. Yeah, the zone.
Right.
You park on the other side of town if that's where the parking lot space is that's available.
Right.
Because that's what you got permission to park.
Right. Versus and the other thing is the 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 private.
Right. Well, that's
Yeah, so and private
But I totally hear Yeah, but it is charging.
But the private is but the private versus public is very gray behind the mills because it's a public parking lot on private property.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we're already having it's a huge issue. Which where so back to where you started, right from the middle.
No, no, no. No, but if we if we if we put if we said I there's a food food truck zones and we put like a couple in front of or in by one eighty, a couple in front of abandoned, maybe a couple between, but we put them on the city's side?
But but I would think that that would be, well, but do you really want somebody who's been drinking to walk across the parking lot to get food? I don't know. It just seems like it starts
I don't know.
What do you mean on the city's side? I guess I'm not clear with that. It's on the city's side, one eighty and
They were always
Oh, so
So the parking The the property line between the private mill owners and the city is right down the middle of the parking lot. We know that, right?
Exactly. Right, so
Yeah.
So so but they have the reasonable rules and regulations for the entire lot. So
Right. So it becomes this
It's just it's it's more complicated back there than it is anywhere else.
It is. It's very
Yes.
It's very complicated.
So so what at the at the breweries that my brother works at is private property. It's just different.
Private property, right. So like Fort Hill.
That's easy.
But it's roped. It's just like just like the garden is right here. It's roped.
Exactly.
Right, totally.
Right. Yeah, 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 yeah.
So you 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 go, he's inside the road.
Right.
Well, on the
Inside his parking lot, inside his
In the on the edge, you can walk up to the the window.
Our problem is the public.
Right.
He's parked outside the road, but he's
And you can
Yeah, but he's
And but you can walk with your beer because you're within the licensed area and it's roped off. My concern is you get somebody
Your postpartum.
Well, you should be walking with your beer anyway. These are food trucks. So you can't leave your little beer. Your little beer cannot leave anywhere that is not a licensed premise.
Yeah, you'd have you would have already drank your beer.
But if you're
Right, right.
Right, but they got licensed for the food truck. Abandoned did that and they had three food trucks within a roped in area and people were wandering around with their beers, getting food.
But
Ooh, interesting.
But that was a dip
It was an event.
No, right. What they did is they got a one day license to
Yeah, 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 yeah. The one day license.
Right, for that. Right, exactly. Exactly.
Right, because what they what they have now
But they roped it all off.
What they have now at um
New City?
Is yeah, New City is what they have now is they have that, you know, sectioned off thing which which, you know, qualifies for
That patio area.
like they extended the premise. So they can have serve alcohol there. So if they put a food if they put a food truck in there, great, but no one can that beer cannot leave there. Beer, wine, no alcohol can leave there for specific for just like the brass cap, that little they extended their premises so that area that's roped in, that's it.
Right.
So wherever they do their food truck, do whatever you gotta do, but well, and no alcohol leaves that roped in area.
But I don't know if I remember because you got in the truck, but you couldn't
But they get in the truck.
You you
It's very good food.
You you
Not hungry.
If you go to the window, you are inside the roped area.
Yep.
And park just beyond the roped area. So the window
Right.
Kinda like what the cats doing.
Kinda like what Brass Cat's doing.
Like what the cats doing. Like they have the roped in area so me and you could be standing in the roped in area and getting our food.
Now, you guys ready for me to put a another layer on top of this one?
Absolutely, bring it up.
Okay, so the other layer that that popped into my brain as I was riding my bike today out in the woods was the fact that um I'm not sure if the food trucks are charging six point two five percent plus the point seven five that we have a local
Well, the meal tax.
local option.
They are supposed to be
I know, but I don't know. Are we seeing any receipts from
Well First of all, we don't see that in like
State does.
I gotta tell you right now, what happened to one of our restaurants many like not many years ago, but during that when we raised our food tax. Um they didn't charge that because they weren't thinking about that. But Department of Revenue needs, they they know that our like we have that point seven five, so they need to charge them for that when they pay their meal tax.
Almost, because they come back to you from the state. Is that how you get a municipal area?
Almost every Yes. It doesn't come to us, it comes back from the state. But we have no idea who it comes from and what it is.
As far as that is about the problem is what town they're reporting in, right?
Yeah. Right. And so it's that's
So if somebody's not doing it, you don't know.
That's the question I was wondering is because what if the food truck is Mission Cantina from Amherst and they're fine now
Which is really good, I don't think.
It is very good, but they're doing business in East Hampton.
Yep.
They're selling their product in East Hampton, their food.
Food. Yep.
How are they reporting?
That local option, that that tax should be being rep. So I just figured I'd put it out there.
That's a good question.
I wonder how they're reporting their meal tax to begin with. Are they reporting a portion of their food where they are? That's an interesting question.
I I because when I because when I bought it the other day, they weren't I didn't pay any tax unless they're just building it into the price of the whatever the the food is. So
Yeah, then how would they know each city and town?
It's gonna so that's it's just the it was just the I it popped into my head and I was like, oh boy.
They're they're not exempt.
Because that that adds another
Hard for each town.
layer to this whole
Going back to the location?
Yes, location.
So I think just from a planning perspective, it's really important that to me, it makes sense that these trucks are in places that need foot traffic and need
Yes.
an infusion of bodies and activity in them and and being cognizant of that when getting locations.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm I'm gonna tell you that as a truck owner, they're gonna tell you
They don't wanna be in those locations.
I don't wanna waste my time, my money, my resources sitting in a place where nobody comes by.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I mean, because
So it's gotta be middle ground. It's gotta be, yeah.
If 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 no one's gonna show up, they're gonna what staff it, make food, throw it out?
Right.
Where no one's walking by?
I mean, like
Do you have any idea how many we have licensed right I mean, how many we have permitted right now from Jackie?
Well, I don't have that number, but I'm
I've only seen about four.
Yeah, I think it's between four and six.
I just saw one in the parking lot lot this week.
It's between four and six. I know that there's a like a Korean one.
Not during the week.
There's that's what that's how she permits them. They pull in, she goes through them and then she, you know, she inspects them and then she permits them.
Yep. Yeah.
I've seen them at the farmer's market and I've seen them at the mills. And that's the only place I've seen them this way.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, you know, for for me, as far as like as we look at as we look at ordinance, I'm I'm not super, I mean
Brass Cat.
Fort Hill.
Well, they're there.
It might be worth mentioning private property, but I'm not like if if Fort Hill has a food truck on their private property, I'm not
Who cares?
As long as it's permitted through the board of health
Who cares?
And they're they're, you know, they have a license to the city, fine. But I think the real concern for us is is public parking spaces and the mills. Those are and and I think you wrote this down here, which is really good. How long can they park?
So that all goes back to parking rules too. So you have to sort of incorporate that. Like there's a lot of downtown uh East Hampton is two hours.
Right. Two hours.
And some of it's one.
So I was just gonna say, some of it's one.
And so and so
Some of it's fifteen minutes.
And and within those, like, you know, what if it that if someone if we do have, you know
And what about public parking?
Right, over here. Because this is unlimited, I just know overnight.
Yeah. Right, and only enforced in the winter. So what about that? I mean, that that that's a big high spot, but
Right. But if we had, you know, I mean, for like for a big event where we didn't where it wasn't a explicit decision not to have food trucks.
Yeah.
I mean, we might want to like if we brought back the fireworks and there was people walking through town and
Right.
you know, or you know, some or Bear Fest, things like that, you know, like there I could foresee some things where it would probably be beneficial. Amy's might be completely packed, you know, the restaurants might be. So having some, you know, some food trucks would be probably good thing. We just need to find that balance.
Well, aren't those all food trucks that excuse me, food trucks that were at the fireworks? Aren't isn't that what all those trucks were?
You know, I'm not sure that we did those, but
All those vendors?
That was just
Yeah, they were all licensed.
They just got permits from the board of health.
Yeah, those were those were all licensed.
Yeah.
They didn't get the mobile vendor. The only people that got the vendor permits were the boomers.
Right.
Right, the people walking around.
Right. So the board of health used to have to inspect those every year, but like, you know, you had your fried dough and all of them, but those are like the the traveling people.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Those are food trucks, yeah.
So I'd like to know how I wanna really know about that tax thing. And I also wanna know, like, how do we know? And it I mean, probably very good, but on private property, they need to be permitted in our city.
Yeah, yeah, they should be permitted.
You know, I don't know what her fee, what her fee is, but it doesn't matter. I mean
Yeah.
It's not, it's not per I mean, it's pretty non
If it's a hundred dollars, I'd be that would be tops. I would
I think it's we can get less than that.
I was just gonna say, I would be surprised.
Yeah.
Is that for the year?
Uh no, she does I think her permit is not year long. I believe it's uh what was it, three months?
I think that's it.
I thought it was six months, but
Three or six month. It's yeah, it's um
It's it's interesting to know though.
It's seasonal.
Have any sense.
Yeah.
You know, like what if it's all year?
Yeah.
Like cause like she does like
I think it's pretty young. They haven't lined up there.
I know.
Right by the bike path?
Yeah.
Oh, right. Oh, yeah.
What bar? Wouldn't you think Bernie Bernie's parking lot right along the bike path?
Right, she doesn't have food trucks lined up. They're ice cream trucks and you know.
But it matters like how long they're permitted.
One right here across from that.
Well, you know, I mean, it cause if
We keep talking about that. Like they could pull right into a parking spot.
That could potentially be Yeah.
There's nothing right now saying that you can't pull right into a parking spot on our side and
And just leave it there.
Yeah.
So so that's that's kinda what we wanna that's
Right, but do you want someone to just do that because they can?
Or forget that right there.
Or do you want to
Right there, that move goes to us.
Right there. Number one spot, right there where the boardwalk is.
Yeah, that is
Or or do you want to say, oh, well, it's one business on Tuesday and other business on, I mean, do you wanna regulate that or do you not wanna get into that business?
Well, I don't know. I don't know if I don't know if we would I don't know if we would, yeah, well, the enforcement would be tough.
It's gonna Back for farm. Are there really that many that would
Uh yeah, and I don't think at this point, I don't think we have the numbers to to say, you know, like on Tuesdays, we can have, you know you can come on Tuesdays and Thursdays or I don't think we have the numbers for that yet. I mean, right now, right now, the majority of the food trucks are centered around our most difficult
For a lot of
legislative spot, which is the mills.
Yeah.
You know, so but it I mean, there is a little bit of a workaround because, you know, because we met earlier with Kyle, who's doing a summer concert series at Millside Park and they're gonna they're parking them on the grass.
Millside Park.
So yeah, absolutely.
That's an awesome spot, but that's public parking, which is great if because it's an awesome spot, but like
Yeah.
Right. Right.
But it takes a parking spaces.
Unless they parked on the grass.
No, they park on the grass between the bike path and the ban shelf, but
Yeah, they're going, they're taking the grass, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Like we're not charging any of these things. We're not charging for these.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Like I gotta
Well, I mean, we
Maybe the maybe the private isn't either. Like maybe
Well, Fort Hill, I don't think Fort Hill charges, you know.
No, I think they're just trying to offer food to their, you know, pay parents.
I think right now, I think right now, Mike is the only one looking to charge.
Mike, Mike, yeah.
Oh, really?
I think so.
Yeah, a hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
So the the brewery
And Fort I mean, New City is upset.
came to me asking about the easement agreement. He said, I can't, we can't afford to spend eight hundred dollars a month to have a food truck permit. And and so that's gonna get worked out by the mill owners and maybe the food truck then goes down
A hundred dollars a day?
to abandoned building brewery because it's cheaper for them to go there and then that business gets lost. I mean, that's their deal, honestly. And I don't wanna get stuck in the middle of
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And and I and there I think that there's, you know, there's a little, I mean, that dynamic is complicated because now the community food engine's coming like coming online.
Yep.
And I think that, you know, probably there's like a competition thing. Like, do we want, because I I community, I know that community food engine is already looking to have some sort of a mobile outside, yeah.
Oh, they are.
Yeah, but outside where exactly where we're just talking, between the bike path and the ban shelf.
Outside. Yeah.
Which is public.
They're gonna put a food truck?
So let me let me ask you this question. Even if you weren't charging or you're not saying there's demand, but someone just started parking right there.
Yeah. Or
Yeah.
Right.
Um do you wanna have a permit process? Whether or not you pay a fee or not, do you have to apply so that it's your truck that parks there all day?
Yes.
Or from eleven to three?
Or at times.
You do you know what I mean? Because that's well beyond the parking limitations of of our on-street parking. Or even if they park here, it's like, well, other people are using that space. So
Right, yeah, at times. Right. Sure.
is there an applic whether there's a fee or not and whether we say A or B, do you have to at least apply and ask permission?
So so my thought on that is, because I think that's a good idea. And I think in order to be able to do that, we'd have to kind of identify specific spots where we think that it would be
Hot spots.
Yeah, that would make sense for a food truck to be there. So we would say, you know, for example, that I mean, that's like far enough away from restaurants that probably that first parking space
Maybe.
Maybe. I mean, it is right. I mean, that's kind of that would be probably an attractive spot.
I think you'd hear about it, but
I mean, Amy might maybe who knows? She'll buy a food truck.
I think I think I think Whiskers would be
Whiskers, Whiskers maybe.
Would not be super happy.
But I mean, it is pretty far, so
Yeah, but like look where that red truck is.
Yeah, right there.
You know, now we're gonna hear about it no matter what. You hear about anything no matter what.
Yeah, it's true. That is you will never make everybody happy. That is that's the first lesson that I learned.
As you know Right. So but what is the what is the parking requirement there? Is it like that one's not an hour?
So I mean, you know, like if we if we
I don't think there's any, there's no time limits on those. There is.
There is on Union.
On yeah, on Union.
There is on Union.
There's no way to, how would you
Well, nobody enforces it.
There's no enforcement.
No, nobody
Well, they enforce it on Union. That's not true at all. They enforce it on Union. Oh, yeah.
Well, that's not really true.
Oh, really, on Union?
Oh, yeah. Oh, oh, parking clerk, yes.
How do they do?
Really?
Yeah, they enforce it on Union. Union is what is an hour.
Well, how do they mean?
What?
How do they do it?
The police. They they do it.
They just they but they just like they don't have chalk or anything, do they?
They don't have chalk.
No, they walk by, they 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 get a complaint, they say, you know, look at that, there's no meters and there's no chalk.
Of they they
What? There's something
Yeah. Oh, so they so it's complaint driven.
It is, but you don't think that will be a complaint driven. They'll be noticed right away if there's a truck
I think somebody's there overnight.
No, 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 no. No, they they don't wait up for overnight. They enforce it if you're there longer than the thing. If it's an hour, the police enforce.
So they drive they do a drive-by and they check what time, all this stuff is there.
It's normally by complaint and it happens all the time.
Right. So
When the parking regulations are, they will enforce it like if because what When the parking regulations are, they will enforce it like it's, cause what happens, and it happened down here on Cottage, is people right in front of their business. They wanna keep it open for people to come and go, and if there's somebody sitting there all darn dead, they'll call, and as soon as they call, they'll come and enforce it and they get a ticket.
Right. Right, 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 yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, it's absolutely enforced and has been for many years.
So, so what I'm thinking though, is if we, if we identified different parking areas around the city and said, these would be appropriate and, um, you know, probably would be beneficial to s, a food truck. Potentially being there, then maybe we could have for those specific spots, you could pull an application for that spot.
Application.
Right, for that spot.
And that would trump the parking regu, you know, so you are permitted to be there, which would then allow you to be there for more than an hour or.
Right.
Which probably brings us back to the van shell area, which is the city, the city property.
Right, yeah, so, I'm thinking, I'm thinking in fr, I'm, I'm thinking potentially a spot here, a spot there, a spot on, um, by, uh. The old, old town hall, you know, like.
I know, but we get so many complaints about those, we had construction.
That, like, those are.
That's really, yeah.
We had construction at the old town hall and we were like flooded with complaints, when are they gonna move their, you know, the, 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 uh, what do you call those things that everybody throws a trash up there?
Trash, the, the bins.
The debris.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 dumpster.
Hall, dumpster, like, the dump, thank you, Barb, the dumpster, it's like, they're doing a project, they're like, you know, gunning and renovating, that, get that out of there, it's taking a spot.
Yeah, and that's, and, and you know, now that I think about that, I'm thinking like Galaxy's right there, Antonio's right there.
We get complaints all the time up there. Yeah.
They're not open, but they're not open for lunch, so that's.
And, that's true.
That's the thing is that, you know, Antonio's is, but, but, you know.
Antonio's is, the Silver Spoon is.
And then, then there's that, you know, which is kind of this anomaly, when we talked to Jackie, and, and this might, you know, as we do this, that, that trailer, like what is it, the sausage trailer or something?
There's that trailer right there.
I, I don't know.
The, the cabasta?
Yeah, the thing that does.
It has french fries.
What, what name?
It says french fries.
Still has french fries and like what Jackie was talking about, how there has to be a whole different.
Yeah, that.
Uh, suppression system.
System and everything.
Right, cause they closed the other van down, cause he didn't have the suppression system.
Oh, and the clean air.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, and this, you know, this might affect that as well, because I mean, that's just kind of like this random food trailer.
But he's on private property, right?
He.
And he's on pri, private property.
That's, exactly.
Interesting, so.
He's on private property.
So, I, you know, so basically the reason why I wanted to have this meeting was to, to get Tammy up, up to speed, or JP up to speed, he'll have to watch it on TV. Um, and we're gonna, I, I think that if we can all start.
Thinking and.
Turning the, the gears on how we're gonna, I, I mean, the real big one, public parking, mills, uh, and may, and probably in the reverse order, the mills, public parking. And try to get our heads around that, maybe, I'm meeting with Mike tomorrow, so maybe I can try like finding some sort of compromised position.
There's a meeting that needs to happen about the back of the mills anyway.
Right.
That's other issues above and beyond just food trucks.
Sure.
Which is our major concern right now.
Right, I, I, we need to, we need to get everybody on board and bear on this stuff, um.
Right.
So, what, and then the other little thing that I have, just like to keep it in the back of your head, like you're thinking, like, if we have private property, private owners charging. I, I mean, it probably is gonna deter, it's probably gonna deter people from going there and then they're gonna go somewhere else, which becomes our problem.
Sticking.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And then, are we gonna charge, you know, like we want to be, you know, like accommodating to business and also serve food to patrons, but if we have some people charging and we're not. You know, like, we might wanna have.
Doesn't make a level playing field.
Uh, thank you, yeah, thank you.
I, I, I would recommend that maybe reaching out to Amherst because they do have food truck regulations in place and since they're a local entity that's dealing with this, that.
Just now.
Yeah, yeah.
That it might be worth getting a copy of whatever they've got in place as a list as a starting point.
Sure.
Yeah, they, they just started all this too, like they just revamped them, this is a big thing that just happened to them now.
Right.
Uh-huh. I wonder if they have any, um, spaces, well, cause I know UMass has a bunch of food trucks, right?
Well, they have, I think they've designated specific spaces and I think it's for certain times or certain days, like there's a very, there's a very specific process, I think they only have three tractors, but what I heard at this meeting today.
Okay.
Right. There's a.
So, which is kind of what we're thinking there.
Um, that they deal with, and so I would just, I would recommend reaching out to Amherst and just see what they have, or it might even be online for that matter.
Right, right, you know.
Well, I know they just had a whole big thing going on about their food truck, food trucks, but I'm, I'm concerned with, um, the public parking, losing spots, losing public spots.
Mm-hmm.
For patrons to restaurants and, and when you're, when you're talking town hall, like those, those patrons, when you're talking about, you know, um, Antonio's, it's Silver Spoon, I mean.
Right.
They, and Galaxy, they are desperate for their business and they are not gonna be happy with a food truck parked outside their door, taking a spot for their patrons.
Right. No. True, true.
So, there's a whole.
So that could be, I mean, like the massage school, but since it's private, they could have.
A whole big thing.
Absolutely.
They can do whatever they want.
They could do whatever they want, right, so.
Absolutely.
Dude, this, this may sound silly, but does it have to be in like a parking lot?
A parking space, like if we permitted them?
So.
Does it have to be public?
Like the, the park in the middle of the roundabout, could you say, okay, let's just put, let's line them up on the sidewalk here, or is there rules against that?
On the sidewalk?
You know how there's just that, you kind of, by, by two, like right hand.
No. There is rules about, there is rules about blocking the sidewalk and about blocking, um, you know, the pedestrian way, but they're food trucks, so they want to be. In their truck with the window open and, 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 and just handing it to you, but, like, I think what you're getting toward, like, if they're private, but is there, are they public? Do they need to be public or can they be public, and if they can be public, then how can they be public, because it goes right back to the biggest issue we have is behind the mills.
Mm-hmm.
Because that is, has to be allowed part of public, so I think if we can clear up the mills issue first.
But they're gonna, I think they would say, well, we, we have control of this area because we have set reasonable rules and regulations, so we've gotta come to some consensus.
Right.
Right.
So then, so then when they have reasonable rules and regulations, we, and, and someone's charging for them.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to.
Right.
We have them right at the other side of the bike path.
Right, on Mills.
For free.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
For free, so where would you go?
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
And then, that's parking spot, well, I mean, that's grass area, but whatever.
Well, and for the mill, you know, when, if, if we did, if, you know, playing around with these kind of catch areas, if we decide, I wonder if we. Cause you know, Mike, at our meeting that we were at with Mike, he was like, I just wanna know who's coming in, so we don't have, if we had one event going on, we don't have, but now, then I hear that, cause then. The New City people told me that he was charging, he wanted to charge, and so then I'm like, well.
What if he doesn't charge and he just has a permit process, like we were talking about?
What he told.
Right, where you just have to get his permission.
Right, what he was really upset with that.
Like limited so many pieces or spaces per.
Right, so if we had, let's say we had a, a, what, a catch, uh, a food truck catch in front of New City, we had one on the other se, like we kinda had.
What's allowed.
Different areas, and then we said, if you wanna go to that spot, you, you have to, um, you know, notify the mill owner and notify the city within seven days of you going there, which is.
And limit how many can be there, because I, if, look, correct me if I'm wrong, Salem, but I thought his biggest problem was saying that they were taking up way many spots.
Three spaces.
And he, he had, uh, somebody was booking three trucks and he's like, what, what's going on here, like, no, I need to get control of what's going on up here.
Right. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right, which is all just a matter of, you, you can't park there with a business versus a private vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you have a permit, either through the city or through the, or through, or permission through the private, it's a private parking lot, he can enforce whatever rules he don't.
It's not a private parking.
It's not.
It's a clause, yeah, it's a clause of public.
But you don't even say publicly.
That's a problem, that would be a combo.
But I'm gonna say, like, public or private, but like if it was a private, if it was, let's just, if it was private, he'd say, you can't park here, I'm gonna tow you.
Well, you know.
Yeah, if it was private. Exactly.
Yeah.
If it's public, we could have a permit process to say there's one allowed per, per Tuesday, per Wednesday, through Thursday night, through Friday evening, Saturday till Tuesday, whatever.
Yes.
Like limiting of.
You know. Yeah.
And I, and I think a hundred dollars permit, I mean, like I saw, I see how much, cause I've seen the food trucks.
Or if they do an ordinance that would take care of it.
I don't, they're selling, you know, five dollar french fries, uh, they're, they're probably only pulling in a few, like maybe five hundred bucks if they do well.
Right.
It's not like they're, they're.
So you could do like.
Hundred dollars is a lot.
Right, but you could do like.
I think so too.
Cause they only have a certain amount of food in those food trucks.
Do you know, do you know like why, like, you know how like, um, cities and towns used to have like Taste of Northampton?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All the tastes, do you know why they don't do it anymore, they lose money.
Yeah, it's not covered by.
They, and what, and like, and it's hard for us to believe, cause if you went to any event like fireworks or anywhere, the big lines are there for like the fried dough, they lose money by doing that.
Oh, yeah.